We'll get started. Welcome to the audit subcommittee meeting of the Springfield City Council. It is now four oh one and we will begin this meeting. We are joined by, uh, looks like order to know, um, Pat Burns, TJ Plant, thank you to Focus Springfield. I also see Paul Tuthill on here as well. And order to know, I will let you introduce your guests and take it from here.
Right. Uh, thank you Chairman Hurst. Um, we have two agenda items to present and discuss. Uh, one, the first being, um, our office, uh, FY twenty-four audit plan. And the other agenda item is, uh, the result of the FY twenty-two financial statement audit conducted by Powers and Sullivan, um, who are here today with us, Mike Nelligan and Todd Jersey, uh, they are both principals with the firm. So, uh, in the interest of Powers and Sullivan's time, I request that, uh, item two on the agenda be presented first. So, uh, if there aren't any issues, I will, uh, turn it over to Mike and Todd. And I will share my screen because they have a presentation that they would like to present. So if I could just do that on my end.
Sounds good. I don't think there are any other counselors that are on here. Uh, so there's no one to object.
Okay. Well, good afternoon again. My name is Michael Nelligan. I'm a partner with Powers and Sullivan. And my co-partner on the engagement is Todd Jersey and he is here with us. And we thank you very much for the opportunity to, uh, come before you today. And hopefully we'll be able to answer any questions that you might have. We, um, we put this PowerPoint presentation together. It's twenty-five pages. I, I don't plan to spend more than ten minutes on it, depending on how many, uh, questions you might have or how much time you'd like to spend on it, but it's, it's, it's your meeting. So we'll just, um, kind of quickly go through it. I, I've flagged off a couple of, um, you know, maybe half a dozen slides on this, um, on this PowerPoint, and I'm just going to touch on some of the highlights of the audit. Basically, the audits went very smoothly. We, we issued three main reports. And they're going to post those for you, uh, after this meeting, but it's the annual comprehensive financial report, which is basically your audited financial statements. This is the report that gets submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association for an award program each year. And the city has gotten the award for, um, a number of years now. It's, um, it's something that about thirty-five communities in Massachusetts participate in. And it's, uh, it's a very prestigious award. It, it requires a lot of work that goes into it by the, uh, many different departments in the city. And it, it provides a lot of in- information in addition to the financial statements. So that has been submitted again this year to the uh, GFOA, and we won't hear on the results of it until probably, um, sometime in August. They typically take about six months to judge these things and get the results back to the, um, communities. The second report is the, the, uh, the CFA, what we call the CFA Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards or the Report on the Federal Award Programs. And that report, we're required to audit annually any, uh, grant expenditure that exceeds three million dollars based on the size of your total expenditures. And you expended about a hundred and forty-eight million this past year. And we audited four major grants within that, and I'll, I'll go over those when we get there. And then we also issued a management letter, and I think we had four comments, and that three of them were repeat comments from the prior years and one new comment about account, um, accounts receivable and cash reconciliations that were delayed a little bit uh, several months this year because of some turnover in the treasurer's office. So Young, um, if you want to just flip the next page, the, the page that I, um, I just want to say on page two, thank you very much for engaging Powers and Sullivan to work with the city. Um, we're very pleased to have you as, as a, uh, client. And, um, you know, we all work very hard to get these, uh, audits done every year. So we're, we're very thankful to the city and to all employees that help us through this process. And then, uh, I'll let you look at this presentation at your leisure later because it talks about a lot of audit objectives and things like that that we don't need to specifically talk about. I'm going to go to page six. So the audit results for the year, we issued unmodified opinions, um, which is the best opinions you can, you can receive on the reports. There were no significant instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government audit standards. Those would be findings that went in the, uh, reports on the federal award program. So we had no findings on that. I'll just highlight that the, um, net pension and OPEB liabilities were fully recorded in the amounts of seven hundred and forty-four million for the pension and a million two, one billion two fifty-five on the OPEB, um, plan. On the next slide, um, as I mentioned at, at the beginning, we, um, have submitted the two thousand twenty-two, um, annual comprehensive financial report. That's the, um, those ACFA, ACFR are the initials that stand for the annual comprehensive financial report. And this is a, let's see, hundred and fifty-six page report this year. It seems to get a little longer every year, uh, but it's full of pictures and statistics and, uh, and the financial statements themselves. And like I said, we should, um, hear on that award program sometime in August, and it would be the, um, I think it would be the twelfth year in a row that you, that, that the city has, um, received the award. Um, and that, if you flip over to page nine, Young, the, um, that report is broken down into, um, actually go back to page eight if you would. So it, it's set up, uh, with an introductory section with, uh, management's, uh, transmitter letter, organization chart, director of officials, and the prior year award, and then it goes into the financial section, which is our audit opinion, management's discussion and analysis, the basic financial statements themselves, and the notes. And then required supplementary information on, on pension and OPEB. And then, um, some others, uh, required supplementary information on combining schedules. And then the statistical section is on page, um, I, I outlined it on the next page, you know, page nine. Uh, and identified the, um, the pages that have all of this information on it. It's ten-year statistical information on all of these categories. And all of this is required information in order to get the award programs. And then if you would flip over to page ten, some of the summary results, we, you had a eight hundred and four million dollar general fund budget. And the results of that budget for the year twenty-two were that revenues came in about forty-four million dollars higher than budget, mainly from real estate and personal property taxes. The collection of those ever-source amounts and the amount of about thirty-six million, including interest, excise taxes, charges for services, permits, and some other revenues. Your expenditures were under budget by sixteen million, and that includes thirty-seven million of school carryovers, which is pretty, um, typical for each year. Your general fund balance at the end of the year was two hundred million dollars, and that includes fifty-three million of, uh, stabilization. And the thing that the analysts look at is the ratio of the, um, fund balance to the general fund expenditures. And that ratio for the city this past year was twenty-three point seven three. And the rating agencies are looking for that to be anywhere from seven to fifteen percent. So you're well, you're well above what the, uh, rating agencies are expecting. As a matter of fact, you got a little bump in your rating, uh, to stable, uh, within the last couple of weeks. And the general fund increased sixty-one point five million in fiscal year twenty-two. And, uh, what, what is called the unassigned general fund balance, which includes the stabilization. This is the amount that's available for spending. It ended up at the end of the year at a hundred and fifty-four point eight million. Um, next page, a couple of highlights here, um, page eleven.
Yep, eleven.
So we, I mentioned the stabilization fund balance of, uh, fifty-three million. The pension funding ratio in this past valuation, the one-one-twenty-two valuation went up to thirty-nine point five-three. And over the last five years or so, that's climbed out of the, it was down as far as like twenty-six percent. Uh, so it's climbed up about thirteen, fourteen points, basis points over the last couple of years. Uh, I think over the last three valuations, actually. So that's heading in the right direction. And mainly, it's, um, it's coming from, um, interest rates, earnings on the, on the investments. And the fact that the, the city's, um, has a very aggressive funding schedule on this. It's increasing nine percent each year. And the plan is to have it fully funded by two thousand and thirty-four, which would be six years ahead of what the state requirement is right now. Um, the OPEB fund, as I mentioned earlier, has a balance, the, a liability of a one point two million billion, sorry, and, uh, that's down from one point six billion in this last valuation. And again, that's mostly the result of the interest rates rising. So that they calculate that, um, a discount rate that goes with that liability. And once the interest rates start to go up a little bit, the liability will come down, uh, pretty substantially, which it has. Uh, your total governmental debt, long-term debt is about two hundred and fifty million dollars. And this is another statistic. This last bullet on this page is the debt service ratio as it compared to the budget. It was three point two five percent. You, you spent, uh, twenty-six point one million dollars on debt service, and that was three point two five percent of the total budget. And again, the analysts are looking for that number really not to exceed about eight or nine percent. So you're, you're well under the, the radar on that one. And then, um, page twelve. So those, those are pretty much the financial statements. The management letter, again, there were no, um, no, uh, deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Those are the things that we are required to report to you in writing each year. We had none of those. We had other comments that we consider to be, um, you know, internal control efficiencies or just things that we want to point out. And those were, as I mentioned earlier, the cash and accounts receivable reconciliations being a little late due to the turnover. Um, there's a payroll communications comment. We, where we talk about, um, some things that have changed since COVID started. And we're recommending you go back to the procedures that were in place prior to COVID, and that is happening. Um, last year, we did a site visit at the, um, golf courses and, and basically determined that, uh, the fuel pumps over there are not working efficiently. So we've recommended that those be either upgraded or replaced or switch over to electric carts or something, but they're not measuring the fuel usage properly there. And I believe there is a plan in place to replace those. And then we've been reporting the retirement system funding level for the last five years or so, and, um, until you're closer to having this funded, I think we'll keep that comment in. But it, it is showing, um, positive change in that, that it's up to almost forty percent now. So, um, you're making good, good progress on that. The next page is the, um, single audit. And, um, kind of the summary here of what we, what we looked at. You spent a hundred and forty-eight million dollars on federal expenditures. Um, ninety-eight million of that, or sixty-six percent was from education. Um, and, uh, nineteen point eight million or thirteen percent was community development related. Twenty-four million was coronavirus relief fund, and there were other grants of six point six million. We audited as major grants. So again, I, I mentioned earlier that we're required to audit each grant that exceeds three million dollars in each year. One, once you get over a hundred million in expenditures, it's, it caps out at three million dollars. And so we looked at child nutrition cluster, the national disaster resilience competition, the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, and the education stabilization fund. And again, as I mentioned on the previous slide, we had, uh, no findings on any of those grants. So you've got clean audit opinions on, on that report as well. And that has been submitted to the federal clearinghouse, and it is available for any of the agencies to, um, look up and see what kind of spending, um, was made by the city during the year. Um, so that's it for the twenty-two results, and I included some slides on our plan for twenty-three on how we're going to do the audit. And, and I have a, a slide that, um, talks about on page sixteen, and you don't need to go there, Young. It just talks about what our objectives are. And they are to audit the city's financial statements and the, uh, report on, uh, federal expenditures again. And most likely, we will issue a, a management letter updating the findings from this year and any other ones that, uh, might come up next year. And then our, um, proposed audit timetable is on page twenty. We're going to do the audit again, mostly remotely. We'll come out for meetings. We'll come out for any site visits. And Young has a couple of things lined up for us that he wants us to do in person. And, um, so we will come back and forth, um, as needed, personal, you know, in person, but for the most part, we'll do it. Um, uh, remotely, just to try and keep, uh, keep a half a dozen of us out of your conference room, um, for, for a couple of weeks. So, um, that plan has been going on for the last few years since COVID hit, and it's working out pretty efficiently. Um, and then lastly, I guess the, um, before I take any questions, if you have any, is there are no new significant, uh, GASB statements, um, Government Accounting Standards Board statements that are going to be required to be implemented this year. Um, so, uh, nothing is going to really significantly change in the financial statements for the year two thousand twenty-three. So that's pretty much the, um, presentation that I put together. Be glad to take any questions or to talk about any of the reports, uh, individually or.
Thank you. So we're also joined by City Council President Jesse Letterman, as well as City Counselor Tim Allen. Uh, just a quick question from myself. Uh, Young, um, can you go back to the single audit slide? Uh, and then I guess my question for, um, anyone of you from Powers and Sullivan is, I, how long have you been doing these independent audits for the city?
We, we started in, uh, two thousand and five.
Two thousand and five, okay. Um, and you've been doing them ever since?
Yes.
Do you go out to bid or?
Yes, the city has gone out to bid every, every fifth year, I believe, or every third year with an option for, uh, two-year extension. So we've, so you, you've basically gone out to bid every three years.
Okay.
But it, but the way it worked out is that we've done it every fifth year.
Got it, got it.
If that makes any sense, but yeah.
It does. It does. And we're also joined by Counselor, uh, Tracy Whitfield. Uh, so just a quick question in terms of your, uh, audit of the coronavirus relief fund. Uh, I see it says thirteen percent here. Uh, I guess I would, one, um, want you just to elaborate a little bit on, in terms of what that thirteen percent, uh, accounts for, what, what is that? And then what was the extent of your audit? What, what did it include?
So what, what that is mainly made up. It, it's about twenty-three million dollars of OPRF funds.
Okay.
That we audited. And it, it was broken down into, uh, about six million on premium pay. Uh, twelve, a little over twelve million of revenue replacement, about four million, no, about, about six or seven hundred thousand in administrative costs. And the central business block, if I can see what that is exactly, um. It was the program for, uh, small business assistance for the most part, and that was about six million dollars. And these were all twenty-two, uh, fiscal year twenty-two expenditures. So those four categories make up about eighty-five percent of that total twenty-three million dollars spending. And, and we go in, there's a, um, there's a compliance, um, matrix that's included in, in the federal, uh, audit guidelines, and they kind of tell us which, what procedures we're supposed to apply to those, um, to those funds. And it's a, it's a, um, it's a, it's a matrix that consists of about fourteen different programs or different categories of expenditure testing, and we are required to pick six of those. And, um, and test, so we're, we, we test for allowability. We test for, uh, reporting. We test for, um, uh, Todd chime in if you want, um. I think I have the thing on my screen. But anyway, we, we follow the federal guidelines on, on what we're required to audit. And we, we do, uh, you know, probably, I think, Young, I, I gave you a summary of our time earlier, that the single audit takes up about uh, forty percent of our total audit time. So it's, it's not an insignificant piece of, uh, piece of the audit. It's, it's fairly substantial. And, um, you know, we go through that, that whole grant, you know, using the, the matrix that's provided by the federal government to audit that in accordance with their guidelines.
Yeah. And are, are these all of the grants that are, that are, were over the three million dollar threshold? Or are there more, and you just highlighted these grants?
These are the, these are the ones that, so every year, we're required to, uh, require, audit all of the three million plus, uh, grants on a rotating basis. We have to cover them every three years. So if, if there were twelve of them, we'd do, uh, three a year, uh, four a year.
Okay.
And, and every third year, we'd hit each one of the ones that are over the three million dollars plus any new ones. So if a new high-risk one came up, we'd have to audit that in addition to the normal rotation of the other ones.
So it's quite, so maybe I'm misunderstanding you, but is it quite possible that you, you may not, uh, do another audit of the coronavirus relief fund for next year? Or is that not the case?
We may not. We may not have to. So what they, what the, what, the reason they call it a single audit is because they have guidelines set up to allow the auditors to follow the procedures that they recommend so that we're not over auditing in any one year. There's, there's very, um, specific guidance on what we have to audit and when we have to audit it. And they're trying to, um, you know, keep the cost down to every community to comply with the federal audit guidelines. And so what they do is they, it typically starts out for a smaller, uh, community under ten million dollars. We're required to audit every grant over seven hundred and fifty thousand. And then once you get over ten million, it's three percent of the total up to three million dollars at a hundred million. So that's how the threshold is established. And we're required, like I said, to audit each one of those three million dollar programs every third year. And then some of them, some of the, um, the, the COVID-type grants are higher risk than others. So we would, we would, if, if we had a choice of which ones to pick, we would pick those before we'd pick something that's been around for a, a long time.
Got it. Got it. Thank you. And we're also joined by City Councilor LeVar Clay Bruce. Uh, and I will, at this point in time, open it up to open the floor up to my colleagues. If you have any questions, I don't see anyone's hand raising the queue yet. Counselor Allen?
Yeah, thank you. I, I, I didn't hit the, uh, raise hand because I'm driving, but thank you. Um, uh, thanks. I caught, I caught you, uh, I got on this. I didn't have the link right away. I got on when you were talking about the golf course gas pumps right around there. So I missed anything before that. Uh, but just a couple of questions. I'm on the audit committee. Um, when you were just saying over ten million, does that mean, um, the budget of the municipality or?
No, that, that means the expenditures of the grants.
Expenditures of the grant. So if the grants were more, totaled more than ten million?
Yes. So that, so the requirement for, for, uh, picking them, what they call a major grant starts off at seven hundred and fifty thousand. Once your total expenditures exceed ten million, they apply a three percent ratio to that total expenditure. So the, so it goes up from the seven fifty up to three million dollars once you meet, uh, go over a hundred million. So if, so if you were at ninety million of total expenditures, it would be three percent of that, or two point seven million would be the, the threshold for a ninety million dollar level expenditures.
Okay. All right. So that's about the grants. Um, what about just in general? The size of Springfield, you know, what determines, uh, an audit of a place like Springfield? Uh, a hundred and fifty-six thousand people, eight hundred and some odd million dollar budget. Or is this Chickaby or Palmer or something else? Is it the same for all, or is there more, a more extensive audit, uh, depending on the size of the place?
No, it, it's the same for each, each community. It, just the thresholds change. You know, it, we're required to, um, to audit in accordance with those thresholds. So, so basically, no, there's no big difference between a, a, a smaller community to a larger community.
Okay. Um, do you, um, do you audit other municipalities?
Yes. Yes, we do probably about eighty-five different communities.
And, um,
And, and a whole bunch more of other school districts and retirement systems and uh, some, some of the government, uh, agencies and things like that. So well, well over a hundred different types of municipal audits we do each year.
Okay, great. Um, well, I appreciated your, uh, you know, comments on the pension, which is something we've all worked hard on. Um, we're up to almost forty percent, as you said. But when you audit different places, do we get the benefit of what you learn from other places? Do you bring that to? Like if somebody was doing something better than us, another place that you audit, do you bring that information or knowledge or idea to us?
Absolutely. Yes. So all of our auditors, this, this is all we do. And, you know, we, we, I like to have a, we have a statement in a lot of our proposals when we, when we pitch a new client is that, you know, if, if there's something new out there, most likely we've seen it already. Because we do a lot of the, you know, clients in, in the state. We, we do, um, you know, a, a wa, a, a broad range of, 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 uh, municipalities. And including a lot of the cities. You know, we just come along Lawrence and Lowell and Quincy and, you know, whole Braintree, whole bunch of, whole bunch of cities.
Okay, great. Come on. So I don't want to eat up all the time. And my last question, at least for now, anyway, is, um, it seems like your overall, uh, report for us is very favorable. Am I, am I right on that?
Yes, I would agree with that for sure.
Okay, uh, thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Chair, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, has the report ever not been favorable? Since you've been doing it since two thousand and five?
It, it's never been, um, um, well, I mean, you had some scary times back when the control board was in place, you know, back, even prior to that. So, um, that, I, I would say that those first few years with the control board were the, you know, the, uh, the, the toughest years for the city to get through, um, for sure. We've never really had any, any, uh, like, I don't know that, I, I can't recall that we've ever really had a material weakness in, in the, in the city's systems over anything.
Okay.
Um, you know, I, I think my experience has been that, that all of the, for the most part, all the employees that we know and work with are very conscientious and, um, hardworking and, and trying to do the best thing for the city. Um, and we've done, you know, over the years, we've done a lot of, uh, been involved in a lot of different departments. And, and I, I can see that consistently, that people really like the city of Springfield, and they like their jobs, and they try to do the best they can.
Got it. Thank, thank you. Uh, we're also joined by City Counselor, uh, Victor Davila. Are there any other questions, uh, before we let Powers and Sullivan leave and move on to the next item from counselors? Seeing none. Um, all right. Thank you. We appreciate your hard work.
Yes, thank you very much as well. Would you like us to stay for your presentation or?
It's up to you. Uh, you don't have to. I mean, it's, I know, uh, you're busy, but, uh, I'll leave it up to you. So, uh, with that, uh,
I'll, I'll, I'll stay on.
Just okay.
It's okay.
Sure. All right. Um, so with that, uh, uh, Chairman Hurst, I will, uh, turn to the next agenda item, uh, which is the, uh, FY twenty-four audit plan.
Or is yours ordered and not?
I will share my screen. All right. So, um, I'll move on to, uh, page one of our audit plan to start off with our mission. So our mission is to, uh, promote accountability and integrity in city government by providing independent reviews and assessment of city departments and programs to improve, uh, city operations. Um, so I just want to point out that we are the only independent internal audit department in the state of Massachusetts for municipality. Uh, I think when the Financial Control Board came in, they modernized the city by establishing, uh, our department. Um, with respect to our powers and duties, so the, the Director for Internal Audit could audit any city department, which includes, um, obviously the city, as well as Springfield Public Schools and the retirements, uh, retirement system. Uh, we also are mandated to maintain a fraud hotline for, uh, city employees to use as well as, uh, citizens uh, of Springfield. So moving on to page two. So page two, we want to talk about our resources. So I have, uh, in our department, there are three, uh, employees, uh, myself, the City of Goulet, uh, who's the manager of the department, and Erica Wallace, uh, an internal auditor. There are about fifty-three hundred hours, um, annually that we could use, um, for, uh, the department, of which fifty percent we have allocated to performing, um, audits. Uh, twenty percent to maintaining fraud hotlines and conducting investigations related to hotline tips. And thirty percent, um, related to, uh, training and administrative tasks. Um, so, uh, just wanted to give you Um, so uh, just wanted to give you some background on um this twenty percent in maintaining the fraud hotline. So in, in the past, uh, this twenty percent is never, um, I guess, uh, on mark, it varies from year to year. So FY sixteen, we went well over that. We spent twenty percent, twenty-nine percent of our time uh, maintaining the fraud hotline and conducting investigations. And FY twenty-one, it was twelve, FY twenty-two, two percent. Uh, every year, uh, we uh typically get about thirty to forty uh fraud hotline tips uh that we um assess. Sometimes uh these are validated, other, other times uh we close them out without um any action warranted. So um, when we do our audit plan, uh, we base it on two things. Uh, we, we look at audits that are required by regulations and the other, we base on a citywide risk assessment. Uh, so I want to talk about uh risks that we factor into our risk assessment. They range from financial exposure to public impact. Um, as you can see, uh, we've given uh most of our uh weight or a lot of weight to um financial uh exposure. So what this model does is, is, is provide a roadmap um, for us to focus on those audits that have uh a greater impact um on the city. Uh, so I just want to point out that when we do uh create this audit plan, uh, we, we have to keep in mind that it, it, it is a plan and it may vary uh, based upon a more urgent project that uh comes about that uh wasn't um scheduled or factored into our, our risk assessment model. So with that, I'll, I'll, I'll go into the actual plan for FY twenty-four. So we'll start off with uh those audits or reviews that are required. Uh, we do uh student activities uh over at Springfield uh Public Schools. So uh, we have a plan with our external auditors, so Mass General Laws. Um, um, basically allows cities to do um these student activity audits uh every two years. And the third year, uh, we're required to um, um, have the external auditors perform that uh review of student activities. So for uh FY uh twenty-three, oh, we're and we, we do it a year in a re- uh, an audit, um, a year in a rears. So for FY twenty-three, uh, we're scheduled uh to do it uh for FY twenty-four. Um, you know, by doing the audits every two years, we save the city about uh fifty thousand dollars uh or twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Next, uh, we uh review the uh, uh, city's uh investments and we're required by city organs to take a look at this to take a look at the city's investments uh quarterly. Uh, in the past, we've uh never had any issues. And um, and we're scheduled to do them every quarter uh for FY twenty-four. And uh, we're also required by ordinance to ensure that the city's financial statements get audited by external auditors uh and as we've done um every year in Powers and Sullivan, um, do, um, they perform those audits. Um, moving on to uh our next item, follow-up review. So as part of our um process, we do follow-up reviews on original, on, on audits that we had performed in the past. So um that's one of the key elements uh of our uh process is to ensure that any recommendations that we make and have been agreed to by management uh get implemented. So we go, uh, we do follow-up reviews just to check on the status of those recommendations. So for the upcoming year, uh, we have a follow-up review for the city's health insurance, fleet management, um, the athletic funds at Springfield Public Schools a- as well as their uh Big Y gift card programs. Moving on to uh page five, um, we're uh scheduled to do a cybersecurity uh review at uh the city and uh that audit is scheduled uh to start uh in the summer, in the, the summer, uh in August. So moving on to um the performance audit, so that we're scheduled to do, um. We are scheduled to do a review of the transportation contract at Springfield Public Schools. Uh, Mike had uh mentioned earlier that uh I have him coming out in the fall to do some um reviews. Um, in particular, I'm having Powers and Sullivan to do a review of the inventory management uh at housing. So as part of uh Powers and Sullivan's um a service contract uh with the city, uh, they agreed to provide uh, some studies or reviews for uh, uh, certain city programs or, or any programs that um we would like for them to review. So I, I use Powers and Sullivan uh just to get additional coverage for the city. Uh, so it just uh allows us to do more uh by um having Powers and Sullivan help us do uh some reviews. Next, uh, we're scheduled to do a performance audit over at uh the Parks Department. So we're going to only get the whole Parks Department from recreation management uh to parks administration and um uh look at their internal controls, uh, uh, how they safeguard assets as well as process cash uh and procure goods and services. Um, moving on, uh, we're going to review the food service contract at Springfield Public Schools. So we want to make sure um, there's a process in place at, at the school department to ensure that uh the school department is receiving um um, what they're paying for and uh the contract is being uh monitored and adhered to by the vendor. And um, moving on to the next item, we are scheduled to review uh the city's workers' compensation program. Uh, the outsourced that service to a third party. Uh, we, we, we want to take a look at uh what the third party is doing with respect to this program, just making sure that they're adhering to um uh the contract and uh their services are being properly monitored. And lastly, we have some hours uh allotted for um unscheduled audits. Uh, these could be of audits that we haven't scheduled and they, and they pop up by special request or by um things that we didn't consider uh in our uh initial FY twenty-four audit plan. So with that, um, that concludes uh my presentation and I'll turn it over to Chairman Hurst for any questions.
Uh, thank you, Auditor. No, uh, just a quick question before I turn it over to my colleagues. Um, the, how, how do you determine which audits, outside audits go to the, the Powers and Sullivan um that you want to see done with the city? And is that, is that something new or is that, has that always been now?
Uh, that, that's been in place for the past uh five years. Uh, so um, uh, so what I typically try to do is, is assign uh some of these smaller uh areas, I, I want them to review uh when they're out here. Um, and uh, so it's, it's completely based upon uh my uh or our department's discretion as to what I would like them for, uh, for them to review.
Why'd you choose housing? I just, I think of housing and code enforcement as something that is, is pretty significant and something that's been on the radar for a while. And also a department that is, you know, endured a lot of turnover and um, you know, a lot of criticism over the course of the last year or so.
A risk assessment, you know, uh, you know, we, we've had some tips in the past about some um uh ethical violations. Uh, I think we had, we issued, uh, we had an instance where we issued uh a, a ethical uh investigation report uh by a former employee in housing.
Yeah.
Regarding inventory. So I, I thought this might be, be a good area for Powers and Sullivan, take a look at the equipment inventory process for the city.
Okay. All right, interesting. Um, what did they do last year? Do you remember? What, what, what did you outsource them for last year?
I, I think, uh, well, last year, uh, I had them take a look at, maybe that, not, not last year, but the year before, uh, had them take a look at the inventory, equipment inventory process over at Parks and DPW.
Okay, got it. Um. Sorry, um. Uh, last question, um, before I turn it over to my colleagues, is the, uh, we've been talking a, a, a lot um, about the way in which um, you know, folks receive, Jack, can you close that door for me? Um, the way in which uh folks receive compensation studies for the city of Springfield by the department, you know, I think now it, it, it seems like uh, you know, each department head can uh, you know, do their own compensation study uh at their leisure when they feel it's necessary. And, you know, we had said what ultimately happens is that there are some departments where folks don't get considered for increases and are left at the same rate for a long time. And, you know, we, I've heard from a, a couple of workers that that has been happening uh more and more regularly. So I know we talked about that potential audit at our last meeting and probably the meeting prior to that. Have you given any thought as to whether that might be included on um, sort of your miscellaneous uh report here where you can allocate some hours towards that?
So uh, you know, with respect to um, a, a compensation study, um, the, the city's HR department in the past have um, done those studies. I think they outsourced it uh the last time I recall, uh, it may have been many, many years ago. So that, that's more of a management function. So um so uh, we would certainly, uh, once a compensation study has been done by the HR department, we would, you know, entertain uh, doing an audit of their study, but for internal audit to do a compensation study.
Not, I'm more so thinking the process by which they go about doing a compensation study. Right? And the fact that it's, it's not uniform and there are some departments that get compensation studies because their department heads are more active than others and others who don't get them at all. Uh, because there are certain department heads who don't recommend it. And so I'm more, so I'm not necessarily looking for you to review uh, or do a compensation study. I'm more so looking for you to do the, to, to audit the process uh, in which folks actually conduct compensation studies. Um.
I mean, that's, you know, um, I mean, we, you know, considered, uh, considered like the payroll process uh, when we did the uh payroll audit and, and didn't find any uh glaring issues with respect to, you know, um pay, uh, pay being approved. So it didn't really bubble up to a, a huge risk that we've identified in our risk assessment model. Now, i- if, if you have or if there's an employee that has a specific allegation of wage or salary law violations, then I certainly encourage them to report it to our fraud hotline. And we will certainly investigate uh, um, those allegations.
All right. So we can talk offline a little bit more and, yeah, a little bit more in depth in terms of what it is that I'm trying to get at. But it, it, it seems like there are a lot of inequities there that a potential audit um may uncover. Uh, but, but maybe we're a bit into the weeds for this discussion. So uh, I will circle back with you on that. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Let me see if I can. Looks like I don't see any hands raised. So with that being said, um. All right, going once, going twice. Ordered a no, um. It's greatly appreciated, sir. Looks like that is the last item. And if there are no questions from my colleagues, which there don't appear to be any, uh, then we can conclude this audit subcommittee meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.